Alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We'll begin with roll call vote.
Mrs. McWhorter? Here. Mr. Updegrove?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway?
Here.
Ms. Dieroff?
Present.
Ms. Hogan?
Present.
Mrs. Denon?
Here.
Mr. Brophy?
Here.
Ms. Nyman? Mr. Foose?
Here.
Alright, so, um, we do have Ms. Nyman on the phone, and she did say that she was here. So next, we have Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
I certify that the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a welcome from Mrs. Lorenzo.
Good evening, and welcome to Culverdale Elementary. I'm Mrs. Lorenzo, the principal here. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our school board directors for your tireless dedication to our students. I would also like to recognize some special people here this evening. If you're a Culverdale staff member, could you please stand? Our students are the luckiest students in the world to be taught by you, mentored by you, and loved by you. I'm blessed to be a part of your team, our team. Thank you. So, you're in for a real treat in a couple of minutes. I'm going to introduce you to seven of our fabulous fifth graders who will highlight some of the amazing things that have happened here at CES this year, as well as activities they're looking forward to as we finish our year together. If I may, I'd like to take a minute and explain how tonight's presentation came to be. I thought it would be nice for you, our school board, to hear about Culverdale the same way you learned about events that take place at BASH during your monthly meetings. My goal was to create an opportunity for you to hear from our students about all the exciting things taking place here at CES. So, if you recall, we need to collaborate about getting your message out there, none other than our marketing and communications specialist Allison Moir. Allison and I collaborated to design a mini internship opportunity for some fifth graders. This experience provided students collaboration, creativity, and aligned the college and career readiness standards. The students worked with Allison and I after school this month to plan and design a presentation for you this evening. They worked so well together and have wonderful things to share about our school and its positive impact on all students. At this time, I'd like you to meet our fifth grade team. Izzy Quinn, Neveah Altamar, Zachary Keen, Zach Montanaro, Greta Patterson, Lily Schaller, and Jenna Fox. One final thought before I turn my program over to my kids. This slide on the screen was created by Zach. When I spoke with him about the message he wanted to send his audience tonight, he immediately said he wanted you to know that Culverdale is a kind place with kind students and staff. Every leader, whether you're the president of a large company or the principal of an elementary school, strives to create a culture of valued relationships, trust, and respect. I'm humbled that our culture of kindness here at Culverdale is more than just words on a bulletin board or a message on a Facebook post. It's felt each and every day through the words and actions of our staff and students.
Good evening, and thank you for visiting Culverdale Elementary School. My name is Hilda, and I'm here to share with you some of the great things that have happened at our school since August. We sat down as a team at our first meeting. It only took us a few minutes to cover a sheet of chart paper with all the great things that have happened here so far. In fact, there were so many things on the list that we had to narrow them down to our top five favorites. Have you seen the pictures and videos of our Smile-a-Day activities? Our entire school met on the playground to create a gigantic smiley face. Mrs. Lorenzo arranged for a drone from the high school to be near the hub of the event. We had so much fun working together to create smiles celebrating students' birthdays and seeing their faculty, and staff received the gift of a pie cut for all time to share. Who knew you could celebrate your own birthday by giving to others? We hosted and authored this in our children. To be honest, Bethany Barton was great, and her lucky books were really cool. But our favorite part was her quote, I'm sure. Everyone was laughing out loud as the paper drifted throughout the hour's turn. Then came "One School, One Book." Our HSA paid for everyone in our entire school, including the run-ups who received a copy of the book, "The World According to Humphrey", by Bethany Barton. Over four weeks, we read the book together, sometimes at entire classrooms and sometimes with other classrooms. We even had our very own handkerchief in front of the K-pop assembly and moved from classroom to classroom as we read the book. The "One School, One Book" activities ended with a really fun assembly where we took a quiz about the book and played a group at the entire school. As members of the Yearbook Club, many of the fifth graders here tonight have had the opportunity to take pictures at these fun activities. The club gives us the chance to learn photography, visit other classrooms, watch memories being made at all grade levels, and to take a fun break from our academics. We also got to shoot the yearbook cover. Shh, it's a secret. Our kindness activities deserve a huge shout-out. Here at Culverdale, we are all about kindness. Through acts of kindness, we have the ability to earn kindness gifts that boost our self-esteem and contribute to filling our kindness gaps for the species in our lobby. Once a kindness gift, our teachers have an opportunity to award one souvenir each class with a kindness gift card. Those same students are celebrated during our great kindness assemblies of the year. Finally, there's our kindness wall that featured a fountain of Christmas, challenging us to complete different acts of kindness throughout the month of December. So far, it has been an amazing year at Culverdale.
Good job.
And the fun will just keep coming. Hi, my name is Lily, and I'm here tonight to let you know about five of the cool activities we still have coming up this year. Just like our first list, our list of things to look forward to covered a full sheet of chart papers. Here are five favorites. We cannot wait to celebrate our very talented participants. We consider ourselves so lucky to have life skills students in our building. Each year, we create those through a line of ways to celebrate our athletes and wish them well as they need to spend the day participating in our district's very own version of special exhibits. They join our friends faces as they prepare to compete in practice. Each year in spring, our HSA brings us to Iowa, assigned along on wheels. All of the students at CES participate. Students in each grade work together to create awesome takeaways, allowing them the opportunity to share what they've learned at home. And every year, the lesson changes based upon our current grade. It's so much fun to learn, gentlemen. The display of sportsmanship at our annual field day makes us proud. Traditionally, we spend the day competing with students from all grade levels. We get to make new friends and cheer each other on. Again, we have the chance to celebrate and support our friends in life skills classrooms, which makes us proud. We end the day with a tub of water, which is awesome. Go Culverdale! Many of you have the opportunity to visit our school in May of 2019 to participate in our wax media project. We would like to invite all of you to join us again in May. Come see me prop up actors and actresses, perform as historic characters. We draw our own scenery, complete our own research, write our own speeches, and design our own costumes. In turn, we turn to our visitors to another time and place and show off everything we've learned when we best our stars. When we heard about the new tradition of upcoming graduates coming back to visit the core elementary schools and middle schools last year, we had no idea what to expect. Now, we can't wait for this year's graduation. We love watching us run up to the building, smile, and shed tears of joy remembering our graduates. It's heartening for them and inspirational for us. We have so much to look forward to before our town area school election.
Finally, we all agree that one of our favorite parts of being at Culverdale, no matter what time of year it is, is welcoming new friends. Culverdale students and adults are very good at welcoming new faces, and I should add.
My name is Jenna, and this is my first year at Culverdale. I went to school in Connecticut until third grade. I was taken over to go up to fourth grade, and now I'm here. The schools of Boyer Town have more opportunities for me than the schools in Connecticut. I'm a member of the Yearbook Club. I participate in the Olympic, and I had the chance to participate in this my first internship. The adults in our schools are focused on getting to know each other. Here at Culverdale, they welcomed me starting my very first visit. They taught me to be myself. I didn't want to do anything special with it. They accept me just the way I am. Just like they accept everyone here in the world.
I look out at mom's come to help and spend time with me at school. It feels like one big family where we treat students kind. We celebrate everyone's success. Having school every day is fun.
With the confidence I have gained here at CES, I'm excited and a little bit nervous to move on to middle school. I can always have my own locker and decorate it any way I want.
I love meeting new teachers and can always move between different classrooms to reunite with my dear local friends and to make new friends from other schools.
I love Culverdale. I love it here. Thank you to everyone for welcoming me. I can always see if the future holds for me and all the other kids in the district. We hope that you enjoy tonight's education and that you consider providing schedule opportunities to hear from the district's younger students on a regular basis. Before I go, on behalf of every year at Culverdale, I hope to take this opportunity to thank our school board for everything they do for the students of our district. January School Board Appreciation Month. The students here at Culverdale, with the help of our art teacher, Miss Bigworth, gave special pledges that you come to do. Thank you for all you did in helping us to grow. Thank you.
I just wanna take a second. Everybody's looking at me, so I'm just gonna take a second. And, um, thank you to seven of you. You did such an amazing job with such a large audience. It has been so much fun getting to know you. Stay tuned. Izzy was live on Culverdale's Facebook page tonight as the speakers were performing. And today, took some pictures that we'll be sharing tomorrow. So, you guys are welcome to go ahead and home with your families and congratulations on a great presentation, okay?
Alright, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have two items for recommendation, or sorry, for recognition. We have the Woodman Life Chapter 364.
Board members and President, Mr. Russell Miller from Woodman Life Chapter 364 from Hershey, PA would like to generously donate flags to be used at our schools on behalf of Woodman Life. Is Mr. Russell?
Russell's sitting there. Russell's back here.
Hey, my name is Sarah Bender. I'm secretary of Hershey Chapter 364 Woodman Life. This is Mickey Pennington, who is our community outreach advisor. And Chris Han, I'm one of our field reps who comes out of Philadelphia. So, right tonight, you've got York, Billings, actually, I live in Halifax, love Harrisburg, and Russell who lives here. But I'd like to read something first for you. It's called "History of the United States Flag." Since June 14, 1977, the Stars and Stripes, our national emblem, represent all the privileges and high ideals of America, such as freedom, opportunity, and a way of life. Even the colors of the American flag are meaningful. Red stands for courage, zeal, valor, and fervency. White is for hope, purity, plenitude of life, and rectitude of conduct. And the blue is the color of heaven for reverence to God, loyalty, sincerity, justice, and truth. General George Washington described the flags as follows: "We take the stars from heaven, the red from our mother country, separating it by white stripes, thus showing that we have separated from her, and the white stripes shall go down in posterity, representing liberty." So, on behalf of Hershey Chapter 364 Woodman Life, we are very proud to present to you four flags through your different buildings. So, Mickey, did you have anything you wanted to say?
We just want to say thank you for all the staff and faculty, teachers, administrators, school board, for all that you do in children's lives, because you truly are changing the future. The investment in genetic and daily basics in these children's lives is a wonderful thing. So, thank you. Woodman Life, we are a nonprofit, member-owned, fraternal life insurance company. We were founded in 1890 to help protect America's families from financial hardship and then also to give our members an opportunity to give back and serve in our local communities all across the country. So, for nearly 130 years, we've been, um, had a shared commitment to family, community, country, and also helping to fight hunger across the United States. Since 1947, we've presented more than three and a half million American flags. We're actually the largest person to throw the flags outside of the government. And we present these flags to other nonprofit organizations, schools, churches, uh, higher departments, things like that. So, it's our honor to give you guys these flags. And, uh, just want to say thank you once again for having us tonight.
On behalf of the administration, we thank you. And, uh, I think Mary Beth or Charlie, one of you all make sure when we leave, we take those ones. Thank you very much. Our next recognition, as our students have already mentioned, is this is School Board Recognition Month and Principal Adoption.
Good evening. My name is Allison Moir, and I am a Communications and Marketing Specialist serving Boyer Town, our high school district. As mentioned earlier, January is School Board Recognition Month. Tonight, it is my privilege to recognize all of the amazing men and women who have served our district as school board members, both past and present. For many years, there was a plaque hanging in the lobby of our education center with the names of our superintendents, board treasurers, board secretaries, and school board members, proudly displayed for all visitors to see. Several years ago, our list of names outgrew the plaque, and we took that display down with the goal of replacing it someday. Times have changed, and our audience is now worldwide as we proudly display our district and its team of civil servants to the whole world to see via our website, social media, and more. This week, we came out someday as we posted our new plaque on our district's website. Now available under the Board Member section of our site is a new page in honor of those who have and continue to serve as members of our school board. Each person listed there has left their mark on our district. Despite varying political views, communication styles, points of view, and our personal skills, the input provided by each member of our school board throughout the years has brought us to tonight. How did we get here? Through a shared passion for children, public education, and one Boyer Town. This is the same passion that, despite our differences, will continue to guide us as we remain one Boyer Town, focused on what is best for children. I would like to pause and thank this group of nine people who spend many hours per month leading our schools and making difficult decisions. Thank you, Mr. Foose. Thank you, Mrs. McWhorter. Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Thank you, Mrs. Denon. Thank you, Ms. Dieroff. Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Thank you, Mrs. Hogan. Thank you, Ms. Nyman. And thank you, Mr. Updegrove. In front of each of you is a certificate honoring your service. Thank you for volunteering your time and talents for the betterment of public education in our modern community. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Wayne Foley from the high school with one more recognition.
Love your first recognition. Obviously, we know this is this month, but I just want to say thank you to our board members. The quality of public education is going to be the key to opening the doors of opportunity for our students. Providing that education fits a team of committed people, which includes our parents, all of our staff, our administration, and of course, you, our board members. So, the nine board members of our local board members make up the important part of the team in making those informed decisions and directing the course of our public education here at Boyer Town. There are few days where you've got time to celebrate and recognize the challenging and hard work that you do on behalf of our community and our families here at Boyer Town. So, as a token of appreciation, we present these. You should all have one of these at your desk, or at your slide there. These letter teachings were made by Mr. Malik, the David Technology Education student. Each flag was hand-tooled and finished by the students. They enjoyed the whole painter, hands-on coordination, and creativity while working to letter. The students in the class are also making a belt of insult right now. Unfortunately, there were two students who could be here tonight and couldn't make it. So, I've been shaking on that, but it was all a safe for them. But each one of you should find one of these. And the students that we're talking about here are our best students in the high school state. So, they are really enjoying it and want you to enjoy these. So, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have the announcement of previous executive session. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss, on January 21st, for personnel, the 30 minutes, and tonight, on January 28th, for 22 minutes on legal matters. Next on our agenda, we have public comment period number one.
No one signed up.
Alright, we have no one signed up at this time, so I will save my commentary on public comment until our next public comment period. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have both December 3rd, 2019, and December 10th, 2019. So, we're gonna do those separately. We'll do December 3rd, first. Motion from Mrs. McWhorter, and a second from Ms. Hogan. Do we have any questions or comments on those minutes? Alright, seeing none, we'll move to the vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Ms. Nyman, did you hear us? You're a yes, thank you. And Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the minutes from December 10th, 2019. Do we have a motion? Ms. Hogan? Second by Mr. Updegrove? Any comments or questions on these minutes? Alright, we'll move to the vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next, we have the report of the president. Um, I just had two things I wanted to say quickly. One, I guess we've already realized that, um, we did implement the change in voting, where it'll rotate by one person each meeting. So, that's why that change took place here. And then also, I just wanted to say this is our first voting meeting of the new year, so I wanted to say I appreciate everybody coming back for the new year. I hope that 2020 is a successful year, not just for the board, but for Boyer Town School District and all of our students and staff. So, we'll move next to the treasurer's report.
Well, my name is Marty Hay. I'll be covering briefly the November and December. So, I'm gonna highlight I'll be covering briefly the November and December, so I'm going to highlight some of the points on November and December treasurer's report. Thank you. For the month of November, we received 3.5 million in local tax revenue. 3.1 of it was local tax collections and earned income was about $100,000. For the state, we received 1.8 million of that, $770,000 for the Reading and Larnes subsidy. Basic Ed subsidy was 270,000 and the bank time was 270,000. As far as the federal revenue, we received a hundred thousand, approximately $92,000 was from Title I and $20,000, a little bit less than $20,000 were from Title II Ed. And one of the things I wanted to also highlight was for the month of November, the salaries and benefits was approximately 25 million, which accounted for 67% of our monthly expenses. The other thing that I wanted to also come to bring to light also was that with the local tax collections, October is the end of the flat tax period, which was received in November. And following that, I'll also cover the December treasurer's report in similar fashion. The local tax collector was local source, revenue collector was 1.4 million. Of that, the local tax collection amounted to 500,000 and earned income amounted to 600,000. Also following, the state revenue total was 4.3 million, the basic Ed was 2.2 million, transportation subsidy was 800,000. And also following that was the federal revenue was 64,000, Title I amounted for 46,000 and Title II approximately $10,000. And also following, the salaries and benefits accounted for 5.9 million of the month's expenditures, which comes out to 7%. And as you see, the local tax collections for this month, it was lower because we're outside of the flat collection period. And that is it for the report.
Thank you. So the recommended action is for the Board of School Directors to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Do we have a motion for that? Mr. Updegrove? A second from Mrs. Denon? Any comments or questions on these treasurer's reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
No.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
And Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Seven two.
Next on the agenda is the secretary's report.
No report.
Next, we have the solicitor's report.
No report.
And on to the student representatives' report.
Good evening. BASH is proudly presenting Mamma Mia on April 2nd, 3rd, 4th at 7:00 PM and on April 5th at 2:00 PM. All tickets are being sold online at boyertownmusic.com.
In preparation for Minithon, BASH Student Council hosted a trivia night in the BASH cafeteria. This fun event consisted of snacks, a basket of raffle, and prizes for the winning team. For those who don't know, Minithon's theme this year is Mario Kart, and Minithon is set to take place on February 28th.
Boyertown Middle School East will proudly be presenting Into the Woods Junior on February 13th and 14th at 7:00 PM and February 15th at 2:00 PM. General admission is $7, and more information can be found online.
Working alongside Greenwich-Lenhartsville Elementary School and Ole Valley School District, Students at BASH contributed to the Teddy Bear Collective Drive. The collections, the collection was donated to the Lehigh Valley Riley Children's Hospital, Safe Berks, local fire companies, and other local agencies.
On Saturday, March 7th, West will be hosting the annual chicken dinner and showfire performance from 8:00 to 9:00 AM. Please come out and support the BASH music program at this event.
February 19th is Read Across America Day, and this year, Students at BASH, who are members of the National Honor Society, will be going to Culbarkdale Elementary School to be teachers for the day and read Dr. Seuss books to kindergarteners.
On February 8th, the Harlem Lizards are coming to BASH for their annual game. Doors will be open at 12:30 and tickets are general admission. Don't miss out on this fun, interactive game by this world famous basketball team as they take on the foundation authors, a team of students, teachers, principals, and administrators from BASD.
Winter sports are on at BASH. The boys' basketball team currently has a record of 14 and 5, and the girls' team has a record of 8 and 11. The boys' swim team is currently 8-0 and will proceed to compete against OJ with the potential to win the pack title. The girls' swim team is 7-1, and they were able to achieve this record with only 12 swimmers. The boys' wrestling team just currently had their senior night against Brook Valley, and they won 43 to 29, taking second in the pack. Boys and girls track has just passed the midpoint in their season and currently have multiple state qualifiers and one national qualifier. There are several relay teams expected to qualify for states in the coming weeks. We wish our teams the best of luck in the remainder of their season.
Thank you, and have a great evening.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board Members. For the superintendent's report, I'd like to provide an update on school transition planning. The school closure and transition process is many moving parts and can be complicated by the fact that staff is also maintaining their normal duties. In order to facilitate some organization to what can be both a simple and in some areas a complicated in others, we recently went over the draft of the transition plan with our building level administrators and central office. Central office leadership is in a lead role and responsibility for leading and transition efforts via the departments they supervise. And the office of superintendent is the communications department, which has and continues to work with communicating our internal and external constituents at various phases of the process. While the decision-making process has passed back in November, work continues and has already started on the communication of transition opportunities between the sending and receiving schools and collaboration with building principals to develop and articulate that plan. With regards to teaching and learning and student services, those two departments are working collaboratively and closely with principals to ensure effective instruction and learning continues throughout the school transition process. Within our supervisory areas, assistant superintendents have worked with their departments and continue to work with their departments to communicate the relocation of special education programs. This has also been communicated already to parents along with planned modifications to our, of our Title I supports. They've also started to work with select principals to make changes in course offerings and to develop the master schedule. A cross-functional meeting is scheduled next month between instructional staff and operational staff to discuss the process for relocation and/or securing of storage for instructional materials such as textbooks and library resources to help ensure students have the supports they need to achieve academically. Our IT department has already started a review inventory and coordination planning for all technology-related tasks. IT staff will work with school leadership to conduct walkthroughs of each site, both the sending and receiving schools, to inventory equipment, assess technology needs, tag obsolete resources, and coordinate the moves. IT will also engage in long-term planning for future to ensure technology investments and master resources required to support our instructional program. IT has also already identified additional savings as a result of this process in the reduction of the need to purchase new and/or replacement equipment. Safety and security is being charged by collaborating with facilities and IT to develop a plan to maintain building security and integrity of our security systems throughout the school closure and transition process. The team will ensure the physical monitoring is in place. Additionally, to protect the district's people, property, and assets, virtual network connectivity for safety and security devices will remain operational. With regards to class sizes, the office of student services and teaching and learning have been reviewing school enrollment projections and analyzing the data for class size projections. As of this week, the data presented to me by those departments shows as a result of the closure and the right sizing of the school district, the district now has an opportunity to right-size our class sizes based on the previously shared district class size guidelines. The class sizes across all elementary schools are now more equitable and consistent from school to school and from grade level to grade level at this time based on enrollment projections. Our guidelines from grades K to 3 are up to 25 students per class and grades 4 to 5 up to 30 students per class, which was also presented during the right sizing process. To give you a sample of some of the situations that existed, in grade 5, our classes range from anywhere from 20 to 26. Projections next year showing that being between 19 and 25. In grade 3, the grade span this year range, class size range from 19 to 26, that is now showing 20 to 25 in its span. Kindergarten is showing an exact duplication of the current year's class size ranges. On the finance and operations side, operations, which is primary facilities, food service, food nutrition services, and transportation are serving as an integral role in coordinating the physical relocation. Facility staff are overseeing all move coordination and building maintenance activities. These responsible include physical moves, facility inspection and repairs, custodial services and cleaning, groundskeeping, landscaping needs, securing the school campus, and redistribution of building assets as appropriate. Several teams within the facility services will engage at different stages of the school closure and transition process to ensure maintenance relocation, property management, and ultimately construction slash capital improvement needs are met during the best, met as best as possible during this process. The Pine Forge Elementary Custodial Staff is currently being reassigned to other vacant positions for next school year, which will reduce staff vacancies and FTE count, thus resulting in personnel savings. Food and nutrition staff will be coordinating with facilities for equipment transition, the transfer of food and supplies to proper sites or storage units until receiving sites are ready for occupancy. The food nutrition department, working with HR, has already met with the Pine Forge food and nutrition staff to provide proposed assignments for the next school year, which also ultimately decreases staff vacancies and reduces the FTE costs for their program. Transportation is starting a process to evaluate the need and options for school bus transportation to reserve the reduced number of schools within the transportation guidelines previously provided. The primary area of focus for transportation staff will be utilizing residence information for students within attendance zone boundary maps to begin the planning of adequate bus driver and operating staffing, optimal bus stop route scheduling, and opportunities to perform practice runs before the school start, the start of next school year. As stated before, the goal continues to be to maintain as close to possible a 50 minutes or less ride. Additionally, they are continuing to look for improvements in efficiency and effectiveness with our bus routes, including pickup and drop-off. They will work with assistant superintendent of student services to plan bus route stops and schedules for the newly created school attendance zone and boundary map resulting from this process. They will also work with communications and IT to communicate changes to the parents. We will be providing new and updated administrative regulations to support board policy related to transportation services. On the finance and budget side, the finance and budget department has been working to identify funding resources to cover the costs associated with executing this transition that might be needed as additional resources. Additionally, they will form account closeout responsibilities for impacted schools to ensure that there is accurate accounting of fixed assets that will be relocated and stored. They've also already allocated for next year, per pupil expenditure allocations to the receiving schools to account for the resources of incoming students. During future budget presentations, the board will receive adjustments to the current proposed budget you will see tonight, which adds of the past couple of weeks' work by the leadership team, will show an additional reduction in the budget deficit that is being shown tonight. The deficit is being reduced by an identified at this time approximately $750,000 savings related to the closure, even after the lowest number of retirements received by Boyertown in its most recent years. Over the five, the last 10-year analysis run by HR indicates that Boyertown previously has an average of 11 retirements per year, which would equal approximately $1.1 million growth. As of the day, we only received three. Additional cost avoidance and one-time monetary opportunities are still estimated to include about $1.9 million in functional upgrades, approximately $1.5 million to $2 million in property value based on the previous estimates provided by the finance office. The total estimated potential cost savings slash avoidance and/or one-time dollars ranges from 4.15 million to $4.65 million. BASD is expected to receive additional cost savings for our taxpayers due to a more favorable bond rating received this past year as a result of the efforts to address the structural deficiencies in our budget. The bond rating company recommended our continued efforts or face a possible downgrade in our rating the next, during the next review. On the human resource side, the human resource department has already met with the Pine Forge Elementary staff to facilitate conversations on employee transitions as appropriate for the staff who may be impacted. HR is also working closely with all building principals to provide staffing, support, and guidance throughout the transition, which include attending school faculty meetings to update staff, these meetings have already been scheduled, sharing employment guidance based on short and long-term staffing needs, and supporting the principals through the reassignment of staff to ensure all staff are placed for teaching and learning to begin at the start of the next school year. Our articulated goal from the right sizing process was to reassign to other needed positions subject to school board approval and to ensure successful day-one operating, opening in August. Principals will not and have not been allowed to interview or consider new staff until all decisions have been made regarding our current staff during this transition. Via school board directors' requests, we have continued to look for efficiencies and effectiveness independent and inclusive of the budget process to show responsible use of taxpayer dollars. As a result, future budget presentations will bring forward staffing changes with program modifications and potential savings. Finally, those but, future budget presentations will also include recommendations for staffing model changes that support our SEL efforts around our nursing services, our counseling services, our safety and security services, at minimal increases and in many cases, cost neutral and change. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And next, we have the superintendent's report consent agenda.
Mr. President and Board Members, I'd like to present to you item number A, the proposed school district's calendar for 2020 and 2021 that you previously received. I would like to note that the next phase of this, once you give your approval, we will share this with our parent advisory council, our teacher-staff advisory council on their scheduled dates, and also our student advisory council. So this time, we would ask for your approval of the proposed calendar for next school year. Sorry, I forgot we're in consent agenda. Overnight trips, the board's practices approved or ratified trips taken by students that require overnight stays. The recommended action is that the board's school directors approve the five BASH orchestra students to travel to Reading, PA. The next one is item B, is a trip for seven BASH students to travel to Exeter on February 13th through 15th to participate in the PAMA District 10 band festivals. The total cost is for the first trip, $895 and $553.83 for the second trip. Item C is a settlement agreement for student number 652053. This is an agreement to address a student need. And item number D is policies 201, 204, and 208 for first reading. And then item E is the Boyertown Softball Booster Club donation previously discussed at the work session. And item F is bid award for the spring sport as listed. At this point, we request approval of the consent agenda as presented to the board of school directors.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent acceptance of the consent agenda? Mrs. McWhorter? Second, Mrs. Denon? All right, since this is the consent agenda, we'll move to the vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And next, we will be moving to the superintendent's report. Itemized agenda.
Item number A is approval of the 2020-2021 preliminary budget. The recommendation coming before the board is that the board of school directors approves the preliminary budget for 2020-2021 as presented. In accordance with the Special Session of Act 1, 2006, the Boyertown Area School District must adopt a preliminary budget and establish the proposed real estate tax rates for the upcoming school year. This preliminary budget must be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education to verify that any tax increase is within the Act 1 index published by the state for each school district. Any increase in excess of the Act 1 index plus any allowable Act 1 exceptions, which this budget includes, would require voter approval at the May primary election. Administration puts forth the following preliminary budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year for approval and submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Okay, do we have a motion for this? Mrs. Denon? Second, Mrs. McWhorter? And then before opening this up to comments or questions, I was, I would like the chair of the Finance and Facilities Committee, is there anything you'd like to say about this particular item from our work session?
Just that, just to say that this is definitely preliminary, and when you look at the deficit and the number that is there, it's just preliminary, and administration will be working to get that number down. This is just the kind of the first look at our preliminary budget. So this is by no means the final budget that we're, that we're going to have.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, move to the vote for this.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
No, I'm sorry, not with these numbers.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two.
Item number B is a change in scope in the Adam Project update. The motion recommendation coming before the board is for the board of school directors to approve the change in the project's scope for the Adam Project as presented and authorizes the advertisement of bids, pre-bid meetings with prospective bidders, and receipt of bids. At your January 14th Finance, Facilities, and Operations Committee meeting, a revised scope for the district's ADA Title IX athletic maintenance and for the district's ADA Title IX Athletic Maintenance and Modernization Project, otherwise known as ADAM, was presented. The majority of the committee members approved placing this item on the agenda for approval, and administration recommends that approval of the revised scope and costs related to the project. I want to clarify, because a couple of questions that came, that sending this revision out for the bids does not obligate the board to spend what they're authorizing. You will get it back and either accept the bids or decline them. You also know that we were, we communicated to the board that we pulled the maintenance building out as an alternate, which facilitates an opportunity for you to discuss that item in more detail when you see the numbers that come with it, as I think requested by one member who wanted to make sure that item could be discussed in further detail.
Do we have the motion? Mrs. Denon? Second, Mrs. Hogan? Any comments or questions? Is there anything you'd like to add? Mrs. Denon as the Chair for this committee?
I don't think so. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. The reason that we are here is because the variance was denied, and the $350,000 number is just an estimate. We're hoping that that will come in less.
Mr. Brophy?
Okay, I understand that to complete this project, we pretty much have to agree to this. I'm not happy that it came in so late and the contractor sort of surprised us with it at the end. What I also am against is the bottom line number moving up to 7 million. I believe that Dr. Bedden has done good work here to move the building out to make it separate, but I believe that the money for this should come from internal for that project. So the $350,000 is already there. Commit it from there and do not move up the bottom line budget. I understand, Dr. Bedden, we don't have to spend it, but once I agree to the $7 million figure, it can be spent, because I have approved it at that point in time and I will not approve it. Although, I understand it has to be done, but I will not approve moving up to $7 million. I think the money should come from the internal portion of the project. Thank you.
Each of you should have received, Mr. Brophy appropriately shared his concerns in advance of the meeting, which is what we want, and then I responded with answers to his concerns, and I added all of you all on there to see the list. If I can add any clarity, if there isn't any clarity, more clarity. What would in essence happen is you do have contingencies already built in, which I believe Mr. Brophy, and he can correct me, is referring to, or is part of that number. The issue becomes, as I shared with the board, so his question is a valid one. That's not the issue. It really is, to me, a question of whether or not you potentially exhaust all your contingencies in the front end of the project is what it really boils down to versus upping a number. So you do have the ability to do that and then make an informed decision when the bids come back, as well as make a decision as other information you received about other sources that you could use later to remind you just to be transparent, that you do have other resources that was communicated to the board that should something come back more. All I would say to you that it is vitally important that a decision is made tonight, not because a sense of urgency personally, but because the market is not in our favor. So either way, the board needs to make sure they make a decision tonight so the project can get sent out to get bids made on it, because it is a kind of a builder's market right now.
Yeah, that captured it pretty well. It's just, I just believe we should be moving money inside the project. I understand the contingency portions, but I believe that we should be looking for savings inside the project, and then at the end of the project, as we look at the maintenance building, we should then look at the money we have left in the project and decide if we're going to build the maintenance building at all, build it for that cost, or then go back and ask for additional dollars. Because at this point, I don't see how the maintenance building is integral to the project, that it has to be done and it can't be deferred, because I believe it can, and that's why I'm looking at it that way. Thank you.
Do we have Mr. Updegrove up next, and Mrs. Deroff in the queue?
My question is, the $350,000, was that a mistake made on the board for not looking at that contract that close that they can make a mistake like that? Is that something that legally we could go after them for?
I'm going to answer the first part, then I'll let the attorney answer the other part. The result of the increase is, as mentioned earlier, the denial of the variance that was done. So as far as whether you can go after them legally, I'm going to take a stab in that the presentation included notification to us that we'd have to get a variance done. Obviously, there was a belief communicated to the board that it would be received. It was not. That's about all I can say as far as what happens next. That would have to be left up to Mr. Sultanic to speak to if there's any recourse regarding that presentation or advice.
Okay, Mrs. Deroff?
We want to go into executive session now during the fourth meeting or address this later pod?
That would be up to the board if they want to go in to do that now or later. The only thing I can say, it's $350,000.
My only point is, regardless of what my advice is, we're still faced with the issue that is, it is in the budget right now as to whether or not we have recourse against an individual is a separate issue independent of that. But right now, it's in the budget. And the fact that there is or there isn't recourse against somebody doesn't change the fact that it's in the budget. That is really up to the Chair. I don't think it's up to the board. I think it's up to you as the Chair as to whether or not you want to have an executive session to discuss that. But what I'm saying is, is that I'm not sure that that discussion has direct nexus to the preliminary budget approval, because I'm not so sure it would impact somebody's vote under the circumstances, regardless of what my opinion is.
For the sake of consideration for the people who are here here and the continuance of the meeting, I would recommend that that's another conversation so that we discuss it later, so we don't leave and then have people sitting here. I think the issue that was presented by Mr. Brophy was whether to move forward with the revised budget that was presented and brought forward to the entire board for final approval. To me, that's the only outstanding issue. I would recommend that we do the legal consultation at a later date.
Because it is my understanding that with respect to the variance issue, the variance is not appealed at this point in time, so if you want to continue with the building project, we have no other choice but to comply with the current status of the facility. So it would only be prudent to be included in the budget if you want to continue with the facility.
So I believe it makes sense to continue with this particular item and move forward with any other comments and a vote, and then we can still have the, if we want to bring this to an executive session, we can still have that discussion. It's not, doesn't hinge on this decision. Are there any other comments?
When we first started this, we were looking at a new stadium, and we were talking a million, million and a half, new bleachers, and it kept going up and we kept adding, and I said by the time this gets, I said, I said by the time it gets done, we're going to be up to 8 million, and I'm not far off. I can't vote for this. We're building concession stands and doing all kinds of things, and now this, and we knew this could happen when we had the original project started. And it makes me wonder, is this one of the reasons we want to close Pine Forge so we can have a nice stadium?
Mrs. Denon?
So personally, Pine Forge and the stadium are two completely separate issues, and I don't think one has anything to do with the other. However, Mrs. Deroff has very legitimate concern that the price of this has been escalating. So as far as the $350,000 goes, at the last facilities and finance meeting, we heard from all of the principals involved in this and all the individuals about why this came about. And I think we had pretty much discussed that the additional possible, up to $350,000 was something that was completely out of the control of this board. Every single person who has done projects like this before felt very strongly that that variance would be granted. These variances are rarely not granted. But again, as I said last time, we have no control over that. It is what it is. So we have to put the additional bathrooms in, and it's going to cost more money. Going forward, I think we have discussed, and I think there's going to be a discussion as to whether or not we can afford to go through with the maintenance building. And I see, and that will be a discussion, I'm hoping, an agenda item on the next facilities and finance meeting, because I do think we need to take a very good look at this and decide whether or not we want to spend money in the capital projects fund for the maintenance building. But that's a discussion for a committee. I believe that's going to be a discussion for a committee meeting. There's a lot of variables because of the bid process, and when you go into this, my experience has been you see what the bids come in as, you look at your budget, and you make a determination. So for me personally, taking the maintenance building off the table is an option, but it's not something that we're going to necessarily, we're not deciding on that tonight. We knew that we have to spend the $350,000 for the concession stand because of the bathrooms. We have no control over that. So I would, I would be, I'm in favor of this and moving forward with this, and I do understand Mr. Brophy's concern that if he votes yes for this, then it's going forward, and then if we have any other discussion and we decide not to do the maintenance building, or we decide not to not do it, to do it, basically, he's, Mr. Brophy's concern, which is legitimate, is that he's already voted to approve a $7 million project. So that's just kind of the steps that we have to go in, but I, I think at this point, to move the project forward, I'm going to vote for it, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to go back and look at the maintenance building.
Mr. Hemingway?
Is it possible to go through the bid process with that original budget, find what those numbers are, and then, as Mr. Brophy said, then ask for additional money?
So the answer to your question is, it's absolutely possible. You actually have two ways to address the issue. Mr. Brophy's version obviously is keep it as is as original number. You've received information of how to address this addition with some other resources. They will still be there available, unless I'm missing my memory here. Those additional resources that were identified will still be available to the board. So the honest answer is yes.
But we won't be able to go ahead and levy additional taxes in the middle of the year, if that's the question. We don't have the option, other than now, to levy additional taxes if during the course of the year, we find that we need additional funds. We'd either have to go into fund balance or into a capital reserve fund to fund that. Well, we have monies left over in the project, but we won't be able to, I thought the question was whether we could go and defer the decision to raise additional funds to cover that down the road, and we can't from that perspective. But we can use any fund that we have created for capital purposes for this purpose down the road.
Now, what I'm asking is to reallocate the money internally to the project, the $350,000, which you would then be allowed to go forward with the project on the bathrooms with the $350,000, but the bottom line doesn't move up. So the amount of money you're deferring for the maintenance building minus some costs is all you have left at that point. So unless there's some other savings that come through the project, you won't have $876,000. You'll have that minus $350,000. So that would make us make a decision later to not build the building, scale down the building, or defer it over a couple of years and then reallocate and do whatever we need to do to build it later. That's what I'm asking for.
Our sidebar over here is what you just said is, that's possible. What you said and also what I shared with him, the other resource, but tax-wise, no. But what you said, he said is possible.
You said it's possible, you said?
He confirmed it is possible. Yes.
So just one quick thing. For me to vote for this, I can't vote for it the way it is. I'd have to see the bottom line here go back to 6733, and then I could be a yes. But until that bottom line goes back to 6733, I can't be a yes.
So are you proposing a motion to amend?
If that's possible, yes.
Well, and Mr. Sultanic can chime in. There was a recommendation made, was there a first and second to even make it yet done? So you haven't even, you have to go through that process first?
We did have a motion and a second.
We did? Okay. That's all checking. Okay.
But if we modify, I believe Mr. Sultanic can correct me, as long as it is okay with the people who first, who moved and seconded, then we can modify, correct?
If there's a motion to amend the preliminary budget recommendation as presented in the way that you want to amend it, and there's a second, we'll have a vote on, which will have precedence over the underlying vote, on the amendment first. So if there's a majority of the board that would support the amendment first, then it would carry. If there isn't, then we would still have the underlying budget recommendation that we have right now. So you would need to make a motion to that effect.
Okay, I'll make the motion to that effect.
We have a motion to amend from Mr. Brophy, seconded by Ms. Deroff?
Mr. President, let me capture so she gets it correctly here, because you didn't state it completely. What we understand, are you following me, Carol?
I'm listening.
Okay. Is that Mr. Brophy is requesting to amend the motion that was second for the revised budget of $7,837,437 to the budget approved on June 11th, 2019, to $6,733,437?
So we've had a motion and a second, so I believe we have comment on this. Do we need public comment on an amendment?
Not on an amendment.
Okay. Mrs. Denon?
So I guess my issue is, I understand if we take it out internally. So basically, if we vote for this, if we vote for this, yes on this amendment, will it mean that we're still going to go through with the concession stand? It will just mean down the road, we may not have money to complete the maintenance building? Is that what we're looking at if we vote yes on this? Because I don't want to, I don't- Because I don't want to, I don't want to vote yes on it, and then we don't have enough money for the concession and the bathrooms. So I just need a clarification on that.
The issue right now for the board is you would have to make a decision for money to come from somewhere else, is what it would be. And what I shared earlier is Ms. Pitts shared with the board some other options of resources, even with this project, when you were looking at the 350, that are still there on the table. But in essence, you would have to consider whether you continue to move forward with it when the bids come in, if it doesn't fit within allocation, or whether you're going to pay for it from another source. And the only sources are like capital reserve, or from another project, if it had money left over, those types of things that are already approved for this type of work. But you can't go do anything new.
Ms. Nyman wanted to weigh in as well.
It's Mr. Sultanic to explain better, so I can understand.
So, Ms. Nyman, do you mind repeating that?
I would like Mr. Sultanic to please explain what we are voting on now.
Okay. Mr. Sultanic, there's a request for clarification on what this vote is calling for with the amendment.
The amendment is to effectively modify the preliminary budget and actually reduce the preliminary budget request by
$350,000.
About $350,000. And that effectively would compel the district, if the budget passes, to find the money from other existing capital funds to complete the intended project. Is that correct, Carol?
I just want to make sure, because we're talking to, the preliminary budget is
You're talking about the
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, yeah.
The budget for the project.
Just for the project.
So we, if I understand this correctly, we are not expanding the dollars allocated for the project. We're putting it back to the initial $6,733,437 approved on June 11, 2019. And then, I guess, when we vote the second time, this would change the budget amount, but it would authorize us on the second vote to move forward with advertising and getting the bids.
That's correct.
Okay.
I appreciate that clarification. There was, I heard a call for the vote. Is that, there was a call for the vote, so I believe we have to move to the vote.
Okay. Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
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 Item C, and I remind board members that if
I think we have to, Mr. Sultanic, we have to go back to the original
No, it's the under
And the reason your mic won't work yet to make sure there's only two pressed at one time, it blocks out everybody else. Okay?
It's already amended.
Now we're voting on the add.
Now we're voting on the amended
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yeah.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
And now, item number C, the bleacher and press box purchase. At your January 14 Finance and Facilities and Operations Committee meeting, the majority of the committee approved placing this item on the agenda for ratification. This is a ratification. You gave the thumbs up to move forward. So the board is, the administration has recommended the board of school directors ratify the purchase of the bleachers and press box from Stadium Solutions through the Keystone Purchasing Network. For those who are here in the audience, the board gave thumbs up. They cannot vote in a committee meeting, but this is done to save taxpayers' money at the time. But the board has officially ratified this action tonight, for clarification for those who may not understand what's happening right now.
Do we have a motion for this item? Mrs. McWhorter? Second, Ms. Hogan? Any comments or questions on the bleacher and press box? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
Item D is personnel actions. The administration has recommended the board of school directors approve the following items as noted. Retirements, two professional, classified four. Resignations, three professional, classified four individuals. Employment appointments, eight classified, five stage crew personnel, four building-level subs, eight substitute teachers, and one Title I support specialist. In addition to co-curricular activities, the approval of four individuals at four different curricular activities. Change of employment, of 12 professional staff. FMLA and leave requests, 10 professional staff, four classified staff. We have three requests for sabbatical leave absence, for uncompensated leave, one classified staff. And then also the appointment of mentor teachers for three staff members.
Do we have a motion for this item? Mrs. Dieroff? Seconded by Mr. Brophy? Any comments or questions on personnel? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
So, Ms. Nyman, did you register a vote?
I said yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
The next item on the agenda is old business. Was there any old business?
No old businesses.
Okay, so next we have public comment period number two. All right, so I'm going to, we have a couple people signed up for public comment period two. So we'll revisit our statement on public comment. On behalf of the school board of directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyertown area's school district. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in VASD Board Policy 006. This document is available at the meeting and on the VASD website. Participants properly registered on the sign-up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number one, we've already skipped that, that's for items on the agenda. All statements, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Participants must also preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Dr. Bedden or a member of his staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes, and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. Okay, so first, we have Nathan Yorgi.
First, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm going to attempt to speak about three different groups of individuals and kind of express some views as it relates to the Pine Forge closure. First, I'd like to start with the students. So I have three students here this evening, too, that actually go to Pine Forge that are representative example of the students at Pine Forge. And the challenge that comes to the students is, of course, the administration has told parents that we're going to be shutting down Pine Forge. We haven't given any good answers. And so our students are right, and so they're asking, Mom, Dad. Their friends are asking, Mom, Dad, why is the school closing? Where am I going? And the first question they ask is, am I going to a classroom where there's going to be less kids and more kids? And the answer is, well, there's going to be more kids, honey, because you're adding to those classes that already exist. The next question is, is it going to be in a building that's better and has more facilities than the ones that I'm in now? No, honey, you're going to be going to a building that's exactly the same from a facility standpoint as the one you're in now. And then the next question after that is, so then why are we going there? And I'm going to have my teachers, and I'm going to have what I give it to be. And there's no answer in there that actually is anything better or anything of substance than where they're at now. And so where I'm left with is wondering, is when the administration is actually going to come and explain to the students of Pine Forge in words that the administration can articulate, why are we shutting down the school? Because from a student's standpoint, it just doesn't make any sense. And there's no compelling reason for them to go, why would I leave here to go over there? Oh, and the other thing which I forgot to mention is the bus rides. So my children, who go to a community school now, have a five-minute bus ride. Yes, that's a luxury, but we purposely chose to leave where we live. My students who are now going to go to Earl, and we were told that right before the Christmas holiday, are going to have at least a 15-minute bus ride. And that's just my view of that. Now, I want to thank the administration for finally being honest. We've heard for all this time, no bus rides longer than 45 minutes. Well, we now know that it's 50, as Dr. Bedden said tonight. And it's probably north of 50. I also want to call out, there were a few board members, even a few old board members representing our district, who said multiple times that they would not vote to close Pine Forge. As one of the contingencies was that bus rides were not more than 45 minutes. And we heard this evening, the bus rides are at least going to be 15 minutes if not one. So hopefully, there'll be some more aplacency from some of the other board members, who have asked that
30 seconds.
to keep the school open. I also want to represent the taxpayers. From the taxpayer standpoint, we've been operating on numbers that were publicly available that showed over five years, we're running out of $20 million deficit. Tonight, we heard some new information, which I can't verify anywhere, because it isn't publicly available yet, that I can tell. But we're now being told that we're going to save 750 this year. Well, even by that, our deficit is more than that. So from a taxpayer's standpoint, I'm
Time.
it's no good for us either. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Joe Yorgi.
I want to thank you for all your work and the energy it takes to do this. It's not a job. My first thing is, I want to apologize to all the teachers, the staff, the aides, classroom support, because nine ten out of them, they're not going to have jobs. Or there are many jobs they don't want, or we're not, that's what we were told, that they would get, that they would keep their jobs, and that's not happening. And I know a lot of them work very hard for our students. It's just not our student, all of them. You're disrupting all the classrooms, all the elementary schools, and you're affecting people. Second, apology I want to make first to the students. I've been in those classrooms. My son has 21, the other one has 22. Add five more, hey, there's no room for five more guests. The other issue is, the children that need the help will no longer get what they need. We're not going to have the classroom sizes to do STEM projects, or those who need to be ready test questions. Where are they going? What about the students that need just a little help? What's going to happen to them? Because they're going to fall through the cracks with 25 to 30 students per classroom. That is unfair to the teachers. That is unfair to the staff. I don't know how many of you have been in classrooms, but 30 is a huge number of children. It is unfair to make our teachers think that they have to teach that, and then they're going to be held liable when the students aren't doing well. And what about those who need IEP help? What's going to happen to them? Because we're running out of time, we're running out of room, these people will not have jobs. So it's more than just shutting the building down. It's moving all of these people, we're not getting smaller as a district, we're getting bigger. It makes no sense, and I know you're, it is, this is just heartbreaking, but for me, it's looking at all of this staff and the teachers, because this is their life, and they have to pay their bills. And I would be very, very sad to see them, or some of them, go.
Next, we have Krista Gross.
I just want to start off by saying that I'm speaking as a parent in the district and a taxpayer in the district. I considered not even speaking tonight, because nothing we have set up here has taken, has anybody taken any seriously, or investigated for that matter. We have proven numbers wrong time and time again, sometimes with slides being changed from one meeting to another to reflect the mistakes that have been pointed out. So why am I speaking tonight, you ask? Because I'm hoping that the new faces on this board will do the homework their predecessors did not. I'm hoping they will see the mistakes that are being overlooked. I'm hoping that they will provide us, provide to us, that prove to us that they will do what they have been elected to do. And that is to stand up for the taxpayers they represent, stand up for the Boyertown School District staff members they represent, and most importantly, stand up for the students they represent. These kids and teachers are counting on you to make good decisions for them. No one is thinking about these kids or these teachers. And not just Pine Forge students and staff, but the staff and the students across the district. These kids with IEPs and social-emotional needs. No one is thinking about how this will affect the students, I mean, the schools with the highest percentage of group reduced lunches, the schools that have multiple safety care calls in one week, the schools with many SEL needs, the schools that have the students that need that extra two minutes mentioned in a recent SEL training, and the schools that are already busting at the seams. When will our kids finally come first? When will they stop dealing collateral damage for terrible decisions made by board members with ulterior motives? And when will we finally have peace of mind, knowing that the members who are sworn in to protect our kids will actually start protecting them? And when will we have the members of the board that will, when will we finally, and finally, when will we have members of the board that will make decisions based on the homework they did on their own, instead of copying off the board members next to them and hoping their answers are right? Community members, I urge you to hold them accountable, ask questions, get involved, and follow through. They're counting on our acrimacy, so don't let it happen anymore.
Next, we have Dawn Keebler.
Good evening. I'm addressing the entire school board, but especially our newest members of the board. You were elected to carry on the Pine Boyertown tradition. My husband is a proud Boyertown graduate that regularly places his fine education you received here so many decades ago. Tonight, I speak on behalf of both of us. However, I stand before you sick to my stomach this evening. We voted you all the
with ulterior motives? And when will we finally have peace of mind, knowing that the members who are sworn in to protect our kids will actually start protecting them? And when will we have the members of the board that will... When will we finally... And finally, when will we have members of the board that will make decisions based on the homework they did on their own, instead of copying off the board members next to them and hoping their answers are right? Community members, I urge you to hold them accountable, ask questions, get involved, and follow through. They're counting on our acrimacy, so don't let it happen anymore.
Next, we have Dawn Keebler.
I'm addressing the entire school board, but especially our newest members of the board. You were elected to carry on the fine Boyer Town tradition. My husband is a proud Boyer Town graduate that regularly places his fine education he received here so many decades ago. Tonight, I speak on behalf of both of us. However, I stand before you sick to my stomach this evening. We voted you, all the community members have voted you to be our school board members. And just as we elect our congressmen in the state and federal government to represent us and our views, we have voted for you to represent our views. For nearly four years, I've heard talk on and off about closing Pine Forge, and not one person outside of the school board agrees with this. Have you talked to people in the community, in the grocery store, at your churches? I'm not talking about the people who have children in Boyer Town. I'm talking about the majority of taxpayers that have no children in the school system. They do not agree with the closing of Pine Forge. It is not a financially sound decision. Talk to them. No one will agree with that. I'm a proud public Pennsylvania educator for twenty-two years. My husband is also a public educator, and so are my parents. A hundred and twenty years of public education service my family has given to Pennsylvania. And I can tell you, there is a difference between twenty-four children in a class, twenty-seven children in a class. There's a huge difference. And you want to bump it up to thirty? Last meeting I was at in the fall, we had, we can't even guarantee it would be thirty, meaning it's going to be more than thirty, and that was said from a board member here. I'm going to tell you, your young staff will run if the class numbers get that big. Your salaries are not high enough to keep them here. They will not have the years of service, they will go elsewhere. If you've been in a classroom over the last several years, it's very challenging, and each year becomes more and more challenging. We cannot put that heavy load on the teachers and other staff members that work with the kids daily on the front line. For the board members who are new this year...
Thirty seconds.
Children are not resilient. They are not resilient, I've heard that too many times. They are highly effective. Trauma-informed education, which I believe your district had as well as mine, says the younger the child, the same traumatic event affects them much greater for their entire lifespan. Other things that have happened, this building right here, one meeting I was at, it was proposed that they would put on an addition, and that's not the time. We don't have the money for that. Thank you for listening.
Next, we have Jennifer Irie.
I'd like to read some facts to you. Daniel Moon School District closed Berthborough Elementary at the end of the seventeen to eighteen school year. The district did so as means to quote "most effectively used resources" due to maintenance costs and a declining enrollment. That year, Daniel Moon Primary Center recorded two hundred and fifty-two behavioral incidents. The following year, after the closure, the school recorded one thousand eighty-two behavioral incidents and elopements. This reflects a five-hundred percent increase in behaviors. Think about that. Five-hundred percent increase in one school over the course of one year. One housing development in our school district consists of two hundred and five homes and accounts for eighty elementary school children. In other words, forty percent of that development is elementary school age. One of the proposed housing developments in the district will consist of over seven hundred and seventy homes. If forty percent of those have at least one elementary school age child, that amounts to three hundred and eight children. This number does not reflect the other proposed developments in the district, and exceeds the projections calculated by Montgomery Educational Consultants. The University of Chicago Consortium on School Research published in 2018 revealed that, quote, "The reality of school closures was much more complex than anticipated, and that academic outcomes were neutral at best and negative in some instances." Math test scores declined in students from the schools that were closed, and reading test scores declined across the board for all elementary students as a result of the school closures. The study determined that the disruption caused by the transition to larger classes was the single largest factor in the decline. Chalkbeat.org also published the outcomes of a 2019 study that mirrored the consortium study. Nationwide, students perform worse on math and reading tests, many schools receive an influx of students from closed schools, causing larger class sizes. Similarly, in 2016, Alternates app board published a study concluding that, quote, "Districts tend to overstate how much money they'll save from shutting down schools." And that, quote, "What districts promise to students, staff, and taxpayers when preparing to close schools differs considerably from what actually happens when they close. Lower-income students were disproportionately impacted when compared to more affluent students in their school districts." Board members, I ask the right of all...
Thirty seconds.
...to all the students in our district as a result of closing the school, so that our schools don't become one of these statistics. We have the power to make this right for our current students, as well as for future generations of Boyer Town students. Thank you.
Next, we have Jen Mataloni.
While the current projected growth within the district calls for some action, I do not feel that the current decision provides a long-term solution. Growth will continue, and despite the closure of Pine Forge, this issue will need to be revisited in the future. Furthermore, I feel that closing a school will have negative consequences which outweigh the benefits of any one mistake. We have been told that classroom sizes will not exceed twenty-five students. Unfortunately, there are already classrooms within the district that are exceeding this. Times have changed, and there are many more students in the district with social, emotional, mental health issues, and also many more children with IEPs. These are the children who will be most affected by larger class sizes. Teachers will not have the extra time spent with these students, resulting in increased frustrations from students and teachers alike, increased behavioral incidents, decreased test scores, et cetera. Larger class sizes can also have a negative impact on teachers by increasing their workload and stress, and ultimately impacting the quality and effectiveness of their teaching, which affects, quote, "staff retention and student performance." Buildings are utilized to pass the leave that means their full. Just because there may be rooms in each school that are specifically designated as classrooms, they are being used for other purposes, such as music, STEM, and speech or other therapies. If these rooms become classroom space and are filled with students, where are these other activities going to occur? Again, this is where kids with IEPs will be impacted. Modular classrooms will likely be the answer to deal with increased student growth. Again, a temporary solution. Unfortunately, in the days where we need to hide intruder drills, modular classrooms pose a security risk. They're not secure buildings, and children are leaving the building to end up modular and vice versa. Certain buses will exceed fifty minutes. Express buses have been proposed, but the thirty-minute routes are actually possible, but it will likely require an increased number of buses and thus increased transportation costs. Considering buses for morning, afternoon, and kindergarten, increased transportation costs are surely not resulting in significant savings by closing a school like Pine Forge, especially with operating costs. Dr. Bedden has stated multiple times how concerned he is about the mental health of our students. Both he and the board have already admitted there is not enough counseling or support staff to deal with these issues. How does closing a school and increasing capacity in buildings across the district make this any better? Without the dedicated space of staff, students will not receive the support they need and deserve. This will permanently affect the entire classroom, as behavioral incidents will increase, learning will be disrupted, test scores will suffer, and frustrations will increase with students and teachers alike. I realize there are financial challenges. I realize Pine Forge is in need of repairs, but so are other schools. If appropriate routine maintenance is better employed, it will alleviate the need for assortment and repair costs are updating down the line. Please reconsider the impact that the closure of District Elementary School like Pine Forge will have on the children, especially without...
Thirty seconds.
...the rest ongoing road. While financial issues always need to be considered, there are higher stakes involved. The well-being and academic success of our children should not be considered less important than money. There are other avenues to improve financial situations. The impact of education and the experiences our children have at Boyer Town will last a lifetime.
Last, we have Ruth Baker.
I wanted to mention a few things related to both the budget and Pine Forge, because they are somewhat related, I think. Back in 2012, when the building project that has put us so far in debt was being approved by board members who often, many of them are not here anymore, and you are left holding the bag, unfortunately, with the debt service, there was at that time a plan for another new elementary school down in New Hanover on leased land at that time. There was also an interest in neighborhood schools by some of the Boys' Pine Forge School Board at that time. And so, my question is this, isn't it going to play into the hands of those who want a new elementary school over a new Hanover, where obviously, more of our kids come from the Montgomery County side at this point in the history of the district? If we have fewer classrooms available because Pine Forge has been closed? You can't escape that you're getting rid of a building that has fairly new roofers, from what I believe, that also has a reasonably serviceable roof that has years of life yet. We also have a building that has a smaller footprint, that means it's easier to heat, it doesn't have electric heat like Boyer Town. It also has smaller roof area, which means when you go to repair and replace a roof, like you had to do in two different budgeting years for a roof, I recall, the last ten years, because it was too expensive to do in one fell swoop. The smaller your footprint, the less roof cost there is when you have to do something for it. And so, I would say, please consider what you're doing when you take away a fairly efficient building, even though it's old, but it's been maintained reasonably well from what I've seen over the years, and I'm in the next township over. And so, that, don't make yourself boxed in where you have to do something that you don't have the money to do, because let's face it, there's no money for a new elementary school at this point, when we're facing debt service like we are, et cetera. The other thing I wanted to mention on the budget, which I have said before, we have more administrators now than certainly when I was in high school. There's been a concept that we need a vice principal at the high school for every class. At one time, we had a vice principal for discipline and a vice principal for academics and school programs.
Thirty seconds.
Those are the sorts of cuts you can make, in addition to vice principals, in addition to combined principals for two unit schools, where it does not directly hurt the kid's education, and it's a gift that keeps on giving every year, and reduced costs, which are pretty massive for administrators. Thank you.
All right, with the conclusion of public comment period number two, we will move to board comment. Mr. Brophy.
Okay, first, before I start, I want to, first, I want to thank Dr. Bedden. I know you've put a lot of work into the rightsizing project. You've done a lot of work into the rightsizing project, and I appreciate that, I really do. However, I'm going to go through a prepared statement. I was elected to this board in past November to represent the interests of the residents of Region Two of the Boyer Town School District. While the region has, this region has many concerns, the same concerns as the entire school district, however, it has one concern that's above all the others. It's the closing of a neighborhood school, Pine Forge Elementary. It's a very sensitive, very divisive topic that's bested in this district for too many years, it just has. Looking at the issue, there are very two distinct, excuse me, distinctive sides. On the one side, you have the administration and the board. They feel they have very clearly communicated the need for the closure. They have presented evidence that they feel overwhelmingly confirms their decision and cannot understand the resistance they're encountering. You then have the other side, parents of the elementary school children who will be displaced. They feel the closing is unnecessary and agenda-driven, as you have just seen. Why do the parents feel this way? Let's look at that. For, over the past several years, first, the parents were told their school had sewer problems and was going to be closed, it was too expensive to fix. That proved to be not correct. Next, money was appropriated and put out to install air conditioning. Once again, their school is omitted. Continuing, and ineffective and highly targeted, in my mind anyway, redistricting was performed. It primarily affected Burke's residents and general Pine Forge in particular. So why would the Pine Forge parents feel there was bias in the agenda? For one, the directors that were minimally and not all affected had no problem voting to close the school. I was sitting in the audience for that. I really was, I was out there. I could see that from the audience's eye, not from a board eye. In effect, to put a positive spin on the issue, which was also done, a director suggested money, the money saved could go to providing full-time positions and for a library person and go for teaching languages. Very noble, noble thing, but what did that say to the audience? It said to the audience, "We're going to take your school and close it, not save any money, we're going to give to somebody else." That wasn't really a good, good message to send out. Later in the meeting, a board president had attempted pretty much mollify why we were doing it, said there was a study that said with schools less than three hundred people were not viable. So with that being said, should the parents of Earl and Culbriukdale make plans for schools to close? So that's another issue there. So this brings, this brings my final question. How does this even begin to address the Montgomery County schools that we have that are overcrowded? I don't feel it does. If we continue down this path, we can discard the one, the one Boyer Town slogan, because it will be considered a joke. The damage done to the overall community will well exceed any money saved. I'd like to, right at this point, make a motion to the board. First, of course, I'm going to ask you to hold up on the closure of Pine Forge. That's the first thing, but that's not all. I'd like to allow for the formation of a committee populated by two board members, one administrative staff member, a communication person, two parents from the elementary schools most affected. That would be Pine Forge, Earl, Boyer Town. I also want to balance this off, because I think the Montgomery County people should also be on that board, from New Hanover and from Gilwarsville, two each. I suggest that the selected schools' PTO presidents and vice presidents be used as a point of contact, nominate, to nominate the parents for this committee. Those groups are most familiar with the school's issues. I suggest Dr. Bedden pick the administrative member, and lastly, I suggest Mr. Rupter Grove and Mrs. Hogan represent the board. I have a reason for that. Mr. Rupter Grove has experience in other township committees. His knowledge is invaluable in moving forward and looking at all these things and getting the right contacts. I think he's a good leader. Mrs. Hogan is a newly elected representative of Region Two, and she's also established a rapport with these people. She's talked to them, she's met with them. I believe they trust her, and I think she's got the relationship to work forward on it. And she also hasn't shown a strong bias one way or the other. Now, I need to put limits on this, because I don't want to kick this can down the road. It's gone far enough. So, here's a couple limits I propose on this motion. The committee's formation must be complete with a name submitted to the board in no less, no more than sixty days of this date. If any of the named schools cannot supply the required or don't supply the required community members, Pine Forge is the most effective school, gets to fill the spots. I think it's a nice way to have the school, all the schools participate. If the committee is not formed and submitted to the board within required time, the original board vote is honored, that's the first hurdle, it goes back to the original board and we're done. The second requirement is that the committee would formulate and present their findings to the board for a formal vote within four months of formation, whether it be an alternative solution or finalizing what the board already has passed. If this hurdle's not met, once again, the original decision goes. I believe this could help to heal the issue. I think this could help to move it forward. I think it could move, whatever we come out with of this has to be honored by everybody. That's including everybody out here and everybody in here. If the, if the decision is the right thing is to close the school, then we have to go with that, we really do. I, as a representative of Region Two, would have to sit there and say, "Yes, I take it." If an alternative decision works, the board has to really think about it, and go, and go work what they can to work with the people. This is important, it's not just about money. So I'm going to recap the proposal for voting purposes right now. A yes vote signifies that the board approves and supports the motion as in total, as I've just presented. A no vote signifies that the board believes that they're not going to go forward with community input and going to continue down the path we're going on, and just go ahead with the closure. I submit this motion for a formal vote, board vote. Will some board members please second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion that was raised by Mr. Brophy, and it has been seconded by Mrs. Yurok. So since this item was not previously on the agenda, I believe we opened this up to public comments.
Right.
So if anybody would like to step to the podium, you have an opportunity to comment on this specific item at this time. If you don't mind, I know you already signed up on here, if you don't mind just stating your name for the record.
Nathan Yorgi. So I absolutely agree with this, as you would assume, I'm not sure, it would, it would make sense, but I think it also is a reasonable thing considering that we haven't seen... seen evidence that is that compelling, even though we've been told and we've been assured that the board sees that. And so I think what this does is it allows us to look at the information and really determine with the community members, with other leaders involved, that there's something here, if there truly is information that, that where the district will either save money, save resources, or do something that's going to add value to the district as a whole, then it makes complete sense, and we should go forward with it. And I think that, that committee will do that. Honestly, it's been something that I have been asking you since the start, when, when we first heard the Pine Forge was on the chopping block four years ago, is let community members get involved. Let those people who have a stake in the, besides just the board, come to the table and look at all the information that's out there and then help make that recommendation. Ultimately, it's the board's decision to make, but we haven't had that yet. And so what Mr. Brophy's motion gives us is that ability to go through that in a short period of time, so that we're not delaying this beyond what's reasonable. If, at the end of that, the answer is close the school, you can still do it for the next calendar year. But yet, it puts it out there in a way where there's, there's clarity to everyone, that it's not just board members who are making this decision based off preconceived ideas, notions, agendas, whatever it may be. And so I wholeheartedly support it. I think it is something that shows good faith in the board to say, "You're hearing and understanding what the community is saying, and that you give us, those of us at these schools, the opportunity to share with you our thoughts and also the knowledge that we bring." Many of us from industry that work with finances, that do rightsizing, that do acquisitions and divestitures, like myself. So we see this stuff, we know how to do it, we've looked at the finances, and so use our expertise as well. The other thing that I would want, that I'd like to challenge you here within the remaining time I have is, think outside the box as you think about this. If this committee goes forward, one of the things that I'm going to recommend is, we have the opportunity, both on the, on the Boyertown side and the Gilwarsville side, to go and challenge the, the townships. The townships on the Gilwarsville side have done nothing to get taxes back from the builders, when they build these massive developers. And likewise, on the Boyertown side, we have archaic townships that say, "You need a three or five acre plot." And I love that personally, but when I look at growth, and I want to say, "If I want Boyertown to grow, those archaic policies need to change." The board can't force them to change it, but you better turn to each other and influence each of those townships and say, "If you don't do this, if you don't make certain decisions about taxes, here are ramifications that this will have on the school district." So think outside the box, and what I applaud Mr. Brophy for is, this idea is one of hopefully many measures that allows us to think outside of the box and do things differently. Thank you very much.
There's, uh, Mr., Dr. Ben would like to make a clarification on the motion.
I want to be very clear and specific beyond some of the other things I wrote here that are inaccurate, but the biggest one, if you go 60 days, we won't be, if, if you went 60 days and then say, "Go ahead and close it," we still won't be able to close it. There's no way we could turn it around that fast. So I just want to be clear of that. So you would be committing to another year after that at minimum, because there's, all the things I mentioned to you, there's no way to do those things. And we will go back and have to go back now. What people... So, I want you to be clear, your motion, the way you read it, would not, would not allow us to be, even actually do the way you presented it, because we could not turn it around that fast. Uh, additionally, there's, even if you undo this, 15% of the kids are still going to move, because scenario one was adopted. And their class sizes are not going to stay the same. We're actually going to scenario one push, as we presented it, students to Pine Forge. So the protection of class sizes, the whole plan was to level them off either in either scenario. So I want to remind everyone of that. Unfortunately, there's a somewhat of a significant misrepresentation. Someone made a comment about jobs being, teachers are going to lose all their jobs. That's not accurate. In fact, the last budget presentation that almost all of, if not less than my hand, were accounted for in the budget that we presented to the board. The transportation presentation always included a target of 50 minutes or less, and you can go back and look at the videotapes. The budget impact, the reductions that have been found so far as a result of this, would go back into it. We'd probably be facing furloughs. I'm just being honest to make it work, because you're going to push the deficit now back to over $2 million at least, which is being factual, and that's, if that's the way the board wants to go. So you're either going to devastate your academic programs and other programs, or there are going to possibly be furloughs, because we would push 1.4 back to at least 2.1 or more in a shortfall. And so those are, again, when I came here, I was asked to plan, I gave two plans, I tried to follow instructions. We have given, so when people say concrete examples of savings, we've given examples over and over again. I gave them tonight. By virtue of our footprint, custodial vacancies will be transferred to reduce vacancies. Cafeteria vacancies will be reduced with FTE count. Administrative count will go down, one person spoke about administrative. We'd actually lose some of our administrative costs, because, for example, you would decrease the principal. So, and I only share that because I want people to have factual information. Beyond that, I'm the administrator, whatever the board's will is, we'll do that, but I'm concerned when misleading information is given.
We're still in the, uh, public comment period, so there were, there were two, I believe, um, yeah, I believe she had her hand up, Ms. Curry, and then, uh, Mr. Amy. We've got a few other people in the queue. If you guys want to line up, feel free, it might be easier. Do you just mind stating your name for the record? Thank you.
Ms. Curry, New Hanover Township. I've lived in New Hanover Township for over 40 something years. I came here around 23. Used to farm land, it was beautiful. And then the developments came, and I haven't stopped. Now we're talking about the airport and planning over seven hundred homes there, which is all very important for me. I attended a lot of the meetings for rightsizing, and I was disturbed, had one of the meetings I attended, where it was said that if Pine Forge was closed, that would only bring any possible problem that would occur if many of the homes were built sooner, and that disturbed me. I feel that it may need that school one day, if the building continues. I would hope, and I like Mr. Brophy's idea for the committee, I would hope this board would approve that, and, um, you know, maybe there is another perspective. I don't know how many of you have taken a trip through this district, we're about 100 square miles. It's like taking a day trip. Very scenic, though, very beautiful. Um, the bus rides are long, for some of the kids are longer, and so I guess I can't see how transporting shoes from Pine Forge to Earl would be 50 minutes or well be traffic. I know what I see now, describing a swamp pipe, and I dread to see what's going to happen if the chairman, senator, and all those homes come to fruition. I probably will not be able to get out of my south side street, probably take 10 or 15 minutes. So I hope this board will vote for this idea of this committee that Mr. Brophy has proposed. It's for our children. Thank you.
Uh, just want to acknowledge, so right at this moment, I, we have, uh, this, Mr. Amy, and then, uh, in line to speak, and then, so we've got three more behind there then. Okay. Thank you.
Mine's going to be a little bit shorter. Uh, John Amy from Gilwarsville, it's going to be a little bit shorter, because Dr. Ben is talking about one of, uh, before he answers one of my questions, which was going to be easy for you to add this motion, to know what the impact of the 60-day freeze would be. Um, in principle, I'm for this idea. I've actually advocated public committees for a lot of things, for investing in budget, for investing, I think, getting parents involved, getting, uh, townspeople involved, it's a very good idea. So in principle, I'm for this idea. I would only add the caveat that we take serious all the implications, what this means if, if, um, we're going to explore this idea, so there's going to be budget implications this year, for example. I was very disappointed that when the Pine Forge job happened, that there were several people who voted to keep it open, which is fine, but then, in a vote after all the parents left, voted against a measure that would have kept the Act 1+ increases on the table for discussion this year. So they want to keep something open that's going to cost some money, and it might be the right thing to be spending our money on, but they're going to take an option off the table in order to even finance it. I would like all the proposals to have their budgetary impacts attached to them clear, clearly, so that people can make smart decisions and they can make very important decisions. And if in order to do this, we have to keep taxes, you know, keep taxes increased for a while so we can deal with the increased deficit, then I expect the people that support whatever proposal comes out of this to throw their weight behind it. Because to try and say that we can spend more money, not cut anything, and keep taxes low, isn't actually being serious and pandering. So I'm for the idea, as long as people take it seriously, all the impact. Thank you.
Great idea, lawyer, Washington Township. Great idea. Okay. One of the things I see is, it ain't going to matter whether the school closes in June or closes next year, June. The only thing you're going to have to worry about, because you're keeping, you already said all the teachers are going to keep their jobs, pretty much, is you're going to have to worry about the building, the upkeep of the building. That's it. That's it. If that's all it's going to cost to get this committee rolling, so be it. We can cut some heads up on the top. We usually talk heavy here, anybody, and that's not, that's being serious. And the other thing is, I think you, you people as board members, just like the gentleman said earlier, I take it very seriously, the building in our township, in our township and in this school district. Right now, we are, we're being pressured, because we got certain rules and regulations in progress, but I never hear from these people. Never hear, "Hey, would you do this? Could you do this? Could you work with us on this?" Because I know what the bottom line is. The bottom line is, we're taxing the people out that can't. I, I look at all these homes going in, and that's getting off the subject, but anyway, I think it's a great idea, and I think if you push this down the road till next year, that's fine, because all you got to worry about is the extras. The extra is the building, that's it. That's it. You said you were keeping the staff, you're keeping the janitors, you're still going to have to boss people, they're still going to boss you. So let's do it. Let's be serious, like the gentleman said before. Thank you.
The only thing I want to say is that we are finally being heard. We've been asked, we've been asking and asking and asking for this board to listen to us, and no one has been listening to us. And finally, finally, there's a breath of fresh air, somebody is listening to us. So please, please, just make a sane decision here, because our kids are counting on this.
I just want to check real quick, uh, familiar face coming to the podium. Is there anybody that is, wants to speak after Mr. Else? Okay, we have two more, it looks like, and I believe at that point, we'll be close to our 30-minute for public comment, so, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Steve Else here, and, uh, I do appreciate the no place for hate posters in room, and I certainly don't expect to get a whole lot of applause, uh, but I'm kind of used to that, being on a board for eight years. The closure of any school is an unfortunate event, and I think, uh, as the board recently went through that decision logic, uh, we all realize that. And it kind of exemplifies a school board member is a thankless job. But I want to go through some quick decision logic, I know we have the three minutes. Uh, some things that were looked at are efficiency, effectiveness, rightsizing, one Boyertown, due diligence, and fiscal responsibility of taxpayer values. And unfortunately, when a decision like this comes about, what really drives it is the data with a lot of numbers and dollars. But you've got to look at the people's side of it as well, which has been certainly mentioned tonight by a lot of constituents. But here's what, here's the way I look at it. On the people's side of the decision, the students, they're being taught by professionals, and I think we could all agree that we can have excellent, outstanding teachers and administrators in our school district. The students that would be redistrict are in the same district, the same curriculum, but yes, in a different building. And as I understand it, I know there's been a lot of numbers thrown out as far as class sizes, the class sizes are all within the guideline, and they do vary, I believe there's a set number for kindergarten to, uh, third grade, and then through four up is a different, a different number. And I do understand that the employees would keep their jobs. Now, as far as some of the, the hard numbers and the data, and whether it's right or wrong, this does drive a lot of the decision logic. So we have a school with declining enrollment, and the projection is its continued, uh, the, uh, decline, uh, of enrollment will continue, and right now, it's under 60% utilization. We have, uh...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
We also have the cost avoidance and the savings, and it's a little surprising with the budget deficit that we're even looking at this, which is going to increase the budget deficit. Normally, we're looking for ways to save money and bring that deficit down to the taxpayers. Finally, it's going to give us better utilization of our schools, and if there is continued growth, we do have redistricting, and if needed, we can...
Time.
...have other schools. Thank you for listening.
I love this, my, um, idea. First things, we want students, and send them our way. That's what we want. It's not that we're trying to be this martyr. We want the students, we want to keep the teachers. And if every teacher's keeping their job, and every administrator's keeping their job, when do they get these contracts? When? When will they be told where they're going and when? And when will the teachers and parents know how many kids are going to be in the classrooms? You, you use estimates, but I'm sure you have definite numbers somewhere. So let us know. Be transparent, give us that information. But I love this idea of having us work with parents and others, because that's what this is about, not just our school, all these other schools, and all their teachers and administrators, everything. Thank you.
So I see, uh, this gentleman coming, and then we have, uh, one last person after that. Then we'll move on to board comment.
My name's Tim Patton from, uh, Holbrook Township. I have six kids that are going to be involved in this school district at some point, and when Pine Forge was found that was closing, I was told by kindergarten, we're going to bus for probably 15 minutes because of where we are and we're kind of flying. As a parent, I had an issue with that. As a school board, you guys have an option to rebook, to rebook it as private. Since the decision that closed Pine Forge has come alike, we've got to have additional housing developments. There's nothing saying we can't bus students from other areas to Pine Forge. Give them more students, since they're asking for students. All of the communities are trying to take their investment out. If the proportion in this group has a budget that we have to run every day, our hassle, if our word here goes, we have to figure out a pay for it. By closing Pine Forge, it's a pay, a payday limit. All we're doing is putting a temporary solution on the project. Our problem is going to be long-term. We want to save the $2.9 million operating costs, from what I read in one of the reports. But what does that put us in two or three years when all these developments come? Now we have a building that's going to put $4 million, and we have no problem spending $6.7 million on a stadium that only benefits kids that play sports. That's not our kid. This, this school can benefit better students or more students in Boyertown. So the problem is, we can say, "Hey, you know, maybe we made it a safe. You guys take a step back, reevaluate it," and if it takes another year, two years... And if it takes another year, two years, and it's still the right decision to close it in that time, then it is what it is. But as a taxpayer and everybody in this group, we don't feel whatever voices were. The nine people that sit before us were voted along to PR and our score of students, most of which do not currently have students in the school districts. We do. We're the ones that have to figure out, my kids could be on the bus for 15 minutes. How do we get to my other kid's sports day when I'm going to get my kindergarten off the bus? That's a thing we need to look at. This is just a temporary solution. It's not going to solve anything. The numbers never add up when it comes to our budget. We continue to fall farther, further behind, and we're not looking at a long-term solution. 600 homes is a huge problem to look at in another school district. And I understand that Pine Forge is a smaller school. Put the money and fix the school up. $6.7 million in the stadium, $4 million to fix an elementary school. They could benefit us for years and years. See if they have a solution in there.
I'm a library center. I currently have two students that are left to go through this transition. And I can say I'm very blessed that I do believe that if they are moved to another school, I think they'll do fine. But I'm thinking three years and four years ahead, when these schools are more full and there's 30 kids, you're saying, "No, in fourth and fifth grade." What are you going to do in three, four years? 32, 33, 35? That's not fair. And it's not fair for our future, for your future. What is that for them? I just, I think that there's so many parents here that are against it, against this. When you go on Facebook, it's the parents that are saying this is wrong. And no one's listening. I feel highly someone is. It's so frustrating to stand back and listen to all this. And now there's so many people that disagree with them from a preventable perspective. And she's right. $4 million says nothing compared to a stadium. I was an athlete. I'm into sports. My kids play. Education is first. That's our future. That's what I think.
So on the topic of this motion, we're going to move to board comment. And I just want to remind our board members of two things. We did adopt in our policy, a three-minute time period. I know this is an important topic, so I'm not going to just tell people to stop. But please be mindful, we're also past the nine o'clock hour, so with that, any board comment? Ms. Dennen?
So as probably the longest-serving board member, I just want to give some history. First of all, I just want to say, I feel that we've been talking about this for four years. And I do feel that I have listened to the parents, I've answered emails, I've told, I've given people my personal cellphone number, "Please call me." And I've been talking to numerous people throughout the community for probably four years about this. Not just, and it's not just the Pine Forge parents, it's parents in the other school districts. And there have been a lot of parents and a lot of teachers who have said to me, "You know, Jill, we need to close Pine Forge. It's not, but we need to do it." So I've listened, I think I have tried to listen in an open-minded way to all sides. And this is probably the most heart-wrenching, difficult decision a school board member has to make. But in the end, I truly believe that it is the right decision to make for all of the students. And just a couple of things that I believe to be a little bit different than some of my colleagues, and just to correct some information. When we first started talking about possibly closing Pine Forge, one of the, one of the issues was the sewer. No one in the administration said, "The sewer is going to cost us $1 million. We should close Pine Forge." They said it was a possibility that we had a major sewer problem, and that should be a calculation into closing Pine Forge. We learned the next year that the sewer wasn't going to be an issue, that the sewer was fine. So that, that reason for closing Pine Forge was off the table. The second was air conditioning. We, as a board, made a financial decision to hold off putting air conditioning in Pine Forge because we were looking at closing it. And that's why Pine Forge didn't get air conditioning, because it would have been fiscally irresponsible to spend $600,000 on air conditioning in a school that we were possibly going to talk about closing. So that's why Pine Forge did not get air conditioning. I would appreciate it if the people in the audience who are commenting as I'm speaking to give me the same courtesy that I gave all of you when I was speaking. I was not talking to my colleagues, and I listed intently to all of you. And I would please ask that you would give me the same courtesy. Thirdly, I don't have any bias against Pine Forge. I technically am a Region 2 school board member, and I do represent parents in Pine Forge. But I represent all of the students in Pine Forge. Just because you're elected from a region does not mean that you make decisions based on the schools that you represent. I don't make decisions based on what's best for Boyertown or what's best for Pine Forge. My job as a school board member legally, according to the state constitution of Pennsylvania, is to provide a thorough and efficient education for all the students in our school district. And I truly believe, after going through all of the numbers and all of the class size discussions and the bus ride discussions, that in the end, this will benefit more students than it will hurt more students. And I totally understand that there are people in this, in this room who personally, their students are, for lack of a better term, getting the short end of the stick in this, and I get it. But when you are in a public school, sometimes those tough decisions have to be made. But it is not a personal decision about, "Oh, I don't like the people in Pine Forge, or I don't like the parents in Pine Forge." I have very good friends that are, that work there. I have neighbors, when we were redistricting across the highway from me, who could have walked to Boyertown Elementary School and were bussed to Pine Forge. And they're some of the people that are heartbroken that we're going to close Pine Forge because they ended up loving that school. And they were here 10 years ago screaming and very, very upset that their child was going to go all the way to Pine Forge instead of being at Boyertown Elementary School. So the reality is that we do not have the development in that part of the district anymore. And I listened intently to the gentleman who talked about, "What are we doing with townships?" Well, very sadly, a school board director is not a township supervisor. And we have no control over that, except to go to township meetings and, except to speak to township people. But with being a school board member, I don't spend a lot of time looking at what townships are doing. We have no control over that. The state controls impact fees. The state controls those laws around development. So I cannot influence that. The last thing I want to say is about class sizes. There's been, there is a lot of discussion around class size.
Listen, if you don't mind, you're approaching six minutes.
Okay, one, I'm going to wrap up right now. The last thing about class size is that we will stay within our guidelines. I know that is not what everyone wants. That's not what I want either. In a perfect world, we'd have 15 kids in a class. That's never going to happen in Boyertown. But we, I have maintained that I would continue to vote for this. If we would keep the bus rides, at one point I said under 45 minutes. It was 45, 50 minutes. It's gone back and forth whether it's what it's going to be. But we have kept our class sizes within our guidelines. So I just want to correct some of the misinformation, and thank you for listening.
Just want to check before anyone else weighs in. If Ms. Nyman, do you have, would you like to make any comment?
Maybe. I think we're there for all of the students. I think this is a good idea. Let us get out there. Let us investigate this more. Because I've been trying to get classroom utilization for how long now? As a board member, I've written a request, and I have not gotten it. And I think this is one good way to find out how these classrooms are going to be utilized and make sure each and every student is getting what they need. Because I'm telling you, it's only going to get worse. I have a grandchild in Title I. I don't want to see her go backwards. And that's what's going to happen to these students. They're going to fall through the cracks. We're going to push them through. And who's going to hurt? The students are going to hurt. And I don't want a one student to hurt. So if this means pushing it back for a year, we can find a way to do that. Let's put the students in hurt.
Just want to say thank you to Ms. Nyman for working through that. I know she's having trouble speaking, so I appreciate her weighing in. Ms. McWherter and, sorry, Ms. Deroff and Mr. Brophy then in the queue, and Mr. Updegrove.
Although I like the idea that Mr. Brophy put forward, and I think that's very good, I think we set a very dangerous precedent by going forward and questioning every decision that, you know, has been made in the past for, for everything that we've done with the school board or the decisions that have been made in the past. I don't think that's a good idea. And that's it. That's just all my comments.
Next, I have Ms. Deroff in the queue, or Ms. Deroff followed by Mr. Brophy and then Mr. Updegrove.
I think what Mr. Brophy wants to do is excellent. I'm all for it. And since we're clearing up everything, I don't think, at least I know I'm not questioning decisions Dr. Bennett's making, because I don't think he made this by himself. It was the board that made it. So I don't think we're questioning every decision anyway. This is one. To clear up some other things, I think a board member mentioned they've been on the board the longest. Why, I have 15 years in, so I think I might take that trophy home. So I kind of know, I kind of know what the people want. I've been around a long time, and they want their school. And they have a good enough reason to want it. Their test scores show it. The staff shows it. It's not just a school, it's a community school. Everybody gets involved, whether you have children there or not. People are involved. They need something, got all kinds of help right away. I remember years back when we used to do the can collection for Dare. We fully funded, at that time I lived in Douglas. We fully funded and paid for the Dare instructor for years. Thousands and thousands of cans of aluminum we collected. And it was never too much trouble. We never had problems getting volunteers. So you deserve your school. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Brophy.
First, I guess as a fiscal conservative, I can't believe I'm saying this, but sometimes it's got to be about more than just the money. That's, that's all I can say.
Mr. Updegrove?
I'd be proud to be on that committee with Lisa for the Pine Forge deal. And getting back to the fact that being with the Douglas Township on the committees down there, you cannot stop a builder who bought land 20 years ago to put houses on it. You cannot stop him. He would sue your pants off if you tried to stop him.
There's a call for the vote, so we have to move to the vote. I believe in, I believe in principle, the motion is to form a committee to evaluate the decision on Pine Forge. And the specifics of that, I think can be handed over...
Yeah, that would be a yes if you want to do that, but a no if you don't. Pretty much, that's it. I think the issue is to make sure the secretary has the information down on what the motion is for the record, so to make sure she has it. Do you want to copy? Do you want to copy? Do you want to take off?
Mrs. Mc...
Yeah, can you just turn the mic off until your vote?
Mrs. McWherter? Can you just remind me what yes and no are each?
A yes vote means that a committee would be formed to study, and there are timelines to meet. And if those timelines aren't met, the current resolution would mean that the closure of Pine Forge would continue, as was voted on in the November 26 meeting. Do I have that correct, Mr. Brophy? So a yes would be form a committee, and as long as the timelines are met, the closure would be studied and stopped for next year.
And that's what I was going to make sure, it is to stop and study, in essence. Okay.
So, no.
Okay. Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
No.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
I'm voting no, because I had additional questions, and there was a call for the vote, and I could not ask them.
Mrs. Stenon?
No.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yeah.
Mr. Foose?
No.
Motion fails. Four or five.
Okay, with the conclusion of that vote, we are still within our board comment period. So are there any other board comments? Ms. Hogan?
I have a few comments. I know it's late, so I will be brief. First, I want to thank the Home and School Association for so kindly providing refreshments for us, and Holbrookdale for hosting. Part of the reason I voted no was because I had additional questions that I felt I was unable to ask. And part of it is because I feel that this would create devastation to our programs. And when I look at something like this keychain that was made by our best students, I think these programs are really valuable to all the students in the district. I do want to say, I hope that we continue to have open dialogue with parents as we move through the process. I think that's really important. I think it's important for the community to continue to come out and to give us their input as we move through the process. So that's all. Thank you.
I did want to, I was planning on saying something as well before the vote. However, it still, it still stands. Essentially, for public record, I just wanted to state that having spent a great deal of time reviewing this, there was a lot of, a lot of data presented, a lot of thought and consideration. And I, I believe wholeheartedly that the previous board who voted on this back in November did so with the intent of doing, doing right by the students of this district. And I understand that there are differences of opinion, very strong differences of opinion. It impacts, a lot of students are impacted generally by this redistricting. And there are students being impacted by the closure of a school. And that's certainly, that's certainly hard to grapple with. The, the biggest decision-making point for me is what will benefit this district as a whole the most students and help us move in a direction of being more fiscally stable. I believe we've made some steps in that direction over the past two years. I'd like to see that continue. I'd like to see us able to utilize additional resources to actually implement some of the ideas our educational leaders have. Unfortunately, a lot of those things were constrained by... Unfortunately, a lot of those things were constrained by, due to financial, our financial situation. The only way to do new and innovative things that have been discussed, and even things that are, aren't really all that new or innovative, there's simply a necessity, like increasing our guidance counselor ratios, improving our guidance counselor ratios, and including, improving the services that we provide for social and emotional learning. As much as we don't like to talk about things in terms of dollars and cents, the ability for us to do those things is driven by dollars and cents. And the disruption to our, to our students and staff, unfortunately, is something that we need to manage our way through in a very thoughtful way. And that takes time to materialize. And some of that requires decisions to be made. And those decisions have taken time. So the, the ability for us to articulate and for administration to put together a detailed plan has been delayed by our decision-making process. I believe that's continuing. I think we heard a very good update tonight. And I hope that, in principle, the idea of forming committees where we have additional community input is a great idea. And I think that we should, in that spirit, look for other opportunities to do that going forward. I don't, however, want to revisit a decision that was recently made, and one that I personally spent a great deal of time, effort, and emotional and energy in, in trying to, trying to come to a conclusion on. So those are the comments I wanted to make on that particular issue. Are there any other board comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? I see a motion for Ms. Whirtle. Ms. McWhirtle? Is there a second? Ms. Hogan? So with that, we are adjourned.